We had done up a general one, not for him though.
No. Because a lot of his requests was around, I think the grant is First Nations related.
Oh yeah, he's got a lot of work to do for sure.
With them is like, that's great, I'm sure we could get support like we're doing.
Just a general, we support anything, any kind of donor like this in our area, it's much needed.
Yep. I noticed, just looking at this thing, it didn't look very official whenever I saw that what we've got, is that all he's sent us?
Sorry?
The document, the two hundred may be concerned and that sort of stuff. It's not on let ahead, it's not anything, I really wonder, well, is this just a scam or is it real?
Well...
That's an example letter, that's why.
I will say, I have met with this gentleman in the past when we were talking about the whole Blackpool lines and utilizing a building on Tocco. And we met several times during our interview to go through is because Blackpool decided not to use it.
Yep. I hereby banish the word Tocco from this room.
I had to, that's who it was.
Um, okay, anything else on that?
Yeah.
Uh, three point two, height restriction zoning by law.
Um, in the past, what had happened is there was changes made to the zoning by law against my recommendation. The reason I was against my recommendation is because it was putting no height restriction on anything. It was leaving it up to a building inspector. Um, I believe that it's in our best interest to go with what the zoning by law says. I would like to repeal this by law and enforce the height restriction as per our previous by law. And when we're reviewing this in the spring as an entire zoning by law, we can talk about some other changes we want to make. The reason I was not in favor of having this height restriction or not having height restriction is because it puts us in a different category when we permit so many levels of a building. Then it changes our whole firefighting abilities. And I don't know if it's necessarily fair to expect the rest of the community to pay for that. Because there may be someone that eventually one day will do that. I think it needs to come back to this table if you guys approve it or not.
I agree, I completely agree.
So I would like to see that repealed.
If we were to repeal it though, is this for the next twenty-five years we're repealing it?
It goes back to your existing by law.
It'd be twenty-five weeks.
What I'm, yeah, that's the problem. So Joe below builds this year and he builds his two-story building because that's all allowed. And then two years hence, everybody around him is building three-story or...
Right now, there is no limit, you can build a twelve-story. Right now, there's no limit, so you can, you can have a developer come in here tomorrow and build a twelve-story. But in a month, you're going to say absolutely no twelve stories because it's going to cost the community more money to provide firefighting apparatus for it. So this, in my opinion, and this is my opinion of course, should have never been brought forward without a process of this going to council first. Right now, anyone can come in and give you a business plan that says, "I'm going to make a six-foot tower of apartments." And you have to go ahead and do it because there is no restriction. And what we're saying is, we want that restricted, we want it going back to the way it used to be. And if they want to have some kind of a height difference, they can come back to council at a variation. Because right now, there is no process, they can just go ahead and do it.
Forty-five feet is more than three stories.
Yeah, that's quite a height.
So that's after four.
Yeah, it's above four.
We don't have a ladder to...
Yeah.
So...
It is above four.
Forty-five feet is to the peak of the roof though.
Right.
Yeah, doesn't necessarily mean you need a ladder.
Three stories is correct, I couldn't, my, my understanding is that three stories are still good. Above that, then you're, you go four stories, now you're above the peak, above forty.
For sure, yeah.
And no ladder.
I think given that we're landlocked, it's a chicken or egg kind of a thing, do you worry about where do you build? And do you have to build up if you want to increase your population? Or do you say, "Well, no, we'll just deal with the spellover in the neighbor's yard and..."
You can do that if you're willing to put the money forward to provide firefighting services.
The likelihood of going, three is the magic number, you do correct me, because after that, everything changes.
Everything gets...
And all your, so your, your cost to building goes way up.
There's not saying you can't do this in the future.
You can't do it, but what I'm saying is...
What you do is, you say it's at three, and if someone wants more, they have to at least come to this table to say, "I want more, and here's what I'm willing to do." Whereas right now, the way this by law is, anybody can come in here and just do whatever they want. You have no control or no say over it.
But I, what I was, I agree with you. What I was trying to say is that, the cost of building in the north is already twenty percent more than it would be in Brandon or one of them. When you go above four stories, that jumps even more. Because your requirements for building go, all change. So you need different engineering, you need different fire regulations, all these things come into effect. So the likelihood of someone going, like building ten stories?
Slim to none.
Pretty minimal.
So there's only two buildings that are that tall in this town?
Okay, so we'll obviously follow your recommendations.
I would hope, yeah, you guys.
Yeah, no, I think so, I think, okay. All right, uh, four point one, building at the airport.
Um, we did the inspection of the building that we now own, um, which is the apartment building. Oh yeah, it was absolutely nasty condition. Um, honestly, leaving there, we were both sick. Didn't think to put on stuff to control mold. The building needs to be demolished, quite evidently. I was hoping we would be able to burn it, but it's too close to all the hydro lines. You're still going to have to get someone a piece of equipment and get rid of it anyway. So I would like to actually put the tender out there and let them know we're looking at doing this in the future. Not necessarily saying we're going to, because I know it's a little cost prohibitive. But I would like to know what kind of money we're looking at.
I'm going to tell you how, it's a safety issue.
It's a nasty safety issue. There's tanks there, like the propane tanks and stuff need to be removed, that's all the kind of stuff like that. I think if we contact...
Stick to it, come get them, whoever they want to.
Yeah, it was, it's been vacant for, for years, right? Like, and it's just in good shape. So I want to get a quote out there, yep, is that okay?
Well, no, I'm just wondering though, like if we do, like you say, if we're, if it's not something we're looking at doing right now, is it really the right time to be putting out a tender?
You may though, you may decide because your liability might be worth more than...
Yeah.
It's unfortunate that the hydro line was there because it would have been a good hydro practice or fire practice, but the hydro was right close.
Really?
Yeah, and it's not just their service line, it's the main lines.
So is some crazy kids break in and breathe in a bunch of mold reliable? We better get on this.
That's why we had them all locked up, but...
Going to kiss yourself in the town, are you? Why would somebody ask for their mold in that building?
Within seconds, I could have told you there was mold in it. Yeah.
So everything closed and nailed shut and...
It's locked, that's as far as it is, the doors are all locked with it.
Should maybe look at doing some sort of caution tape and mold signs and whatever.
Yellow tape rather than...
Yeah, yes.
It's torn down, I guess it'll plug it in. Could it go to the lake, Tom?
What's that?
You're mitigating, you're mitigating your liability when you do that.
You're going to have to do tests for specialists too, right?
You're mitigating your liability.
Beware of mold.
Okay? Beware of dangerous building, condemned building.
That's what I would kind of like to ask them, even if they could move it, like, because we have a, we have a fuel there, but it's ours. Even if we could have knocked it and dragged it and burnt it away from the hydro lines. Which means you might have plane service that's going to be down for a day or two. Because there's those things, right?
A bunch of people live out there that would know exactly how to do that on a Friday night.
But yeah, because you're talking transport Canada regulations and stuff, this isn't going to be so easy, even with the equipment in there. So what we'd like to do is just look into some options, and if it seems like a decent option, I think we should jump on it.
Okay. Four point two, council indemnity.
Um, basically, we discussed this and proposed to move forward with first reading to reflect the change in the middle of the bylaw. And this was to do the ten percent reduction for the next three years, and then go back to normal, do that.
We won't even know what normal is after that, after taking a zero percent on the last year, ten percent this year, ten percent next year, ten percent the year after.
Do you have CPI report?
Okay, are we, we're all good to go on that?
Yes.
I would imagine. Well, I, I don't know whether, whether it's a timely thing. I don't think it's going to make much difference to the rest of the operation whether or not we give up a little bit. And over, over time, as long as, as long as things come back. Because we're only here for a couple more years, then there's another election, and then people see a pattern and they go, "My God, you're not..." When you don't appreciate the time, that, that becomes a good question, eh? And whatever, whatever the rest do, I would say we, we do equally, the same as everybody else has. And how much have we saved?
Eight thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars, ten percent. It doesn't matter what we're saving, we've, we've asked our department heads to, for a reduction of seven to ten percent within all their departments. And this is just, this is toeing the same line, in my opinion. That's what we're doing, we're looking to cut dollars where we can cut dollars, and this is one spot that I'm, I'm in favor of cutting some dollars. I, I do appreciate and understand that a better dollar gets a, a better, a better day's pay maybe gets a better employee or whatever. But I, I personally didn't sign up for, for the, for the wages, you know? And I'm assuming that there's going to be other people that are going to come along that are in it for the community and not necessarily for the, for the life of luxury that the, the council wages provide for us.
They are hugely luxurious. That was very well said, Jim. I, I, my only concern is that, is that you, just what we talked about, you devalue the positions. And at some point, other people will be running, I wish them well, I'm not in it for the money, I'm, I'm fine with the ten percent. Everybody else is okay with that, we'll move forward with the resolution then?
Just to give you some satisfaction on this, Brian, Jen was just pointing out, and Kristo, this is for two years, you're locked only into your term. Twenty nineteen, it's going back to the CPI. Consumer Price Index?
Right.
So it'll be up to them.
Because we decided that we should only speak for our department, that we should at least speak for...
Well, either that or you speak to the prior term of, of the tax relief, tax aid issue.
Financial aid.
The financial aid. Because there's two, because it's, it's a disconnect. We wouldn't, would we be doing it if Tocco hasn't shut down and all this? I think not. I think it's because of that, so why not, why not tie it to that? And they can, they can reverse it if they like, whoever's there. But that way, there's a connection and some consistency.
I think it's just because of the decision that was made, that we're just saying, you know what? Let's go with the employees, they took a ten percent, so the honorable thing, you know, it's a nice thing to do to, to show the ten percent. Let's do it too.
Okay.
I'm just moving down here because the light's flashing too much.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I get my dreams, so that's not going to help me.
So do we agree we're going to go out there for three years?
Do we do three years or do we do two?
Where are we doing this?
I would do, I would do with this in two, because I...
I'll return.
That's fine, it's for our term, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, four point three, Aaron, council travel and training.
Um, this had come up where there was no money put in the budget for the travels. So this is more of a reminder, and that's reevaluate, that we need to include this in twenty seventeen for council travel, all the things in the evening.
Is that what we did?
I think...
We just missed it?
Yeah. I think, part of it, I think that we said year two, we wouldn't need to spend as much either. But things have come up that were out of everybody's control.
I think too, I vaguely remember a conversation where Carrie said that she had a budget line for travel and training type things that she...
Some could fall under her...
Right, that some could fall under hers, because she quite often had up here money in that travel and training line, those foreign positions not being thrown and that sort of thing, so.
And I do recall too, there was an amount given, and I think it was supposed to be per counselor, and it ended up being divided by seven? I think there was a bit of a miscommunication.
So all this is, is just keep it in mind moving forward for next year?
I guess my point is, Carrie has money in her budget, that's great, but we shouldn't be shuffling things around, right? I don't think we've done a very good job at being strategic, how we go to meetings. There's no reporting back, last AMM, four of us went and it was ten thousand bucks, like, we got to be more on top of what we're agreeing to and looking at it, right? Like, and I get, well, that's fine, Jim, but I mean, like, so last week's meeting, right, very important. Things happen, like you said, we need to go to. But if we operate like everything's fine all the time and just willy-nilly go on to meetings and then things, you know, it's always cyclical, we're not ready for the downturn. Yeah, we'll just spend more at a time when you don't need to be doing that. So we need to be strategic and look in what we're going to, not just putting our hands up, "Hey, that's another meeting, let's go, let's go." Like, what are we going to, why are we going, what's, what's the return back? We don't do any of that. I'm just as guilty, right, I put my hand up, sure, someone won't go, but I mean, that's, that's going to end today. Back to our previous discussion, if we're going to ask everyone for ten percent, if we're going to talk the talk, we got to walk the walk, right? Like, and this is another point, like, ten thousand bucks, that's two percent of, of the allotment we're after. So is, to say it's insignificant, no, because if you do that five, ten times, then we're on top of things, and we're not on top of things now.
I, I think too, to follow the point you made in, in council, that when you, when you recommended sending one person to the upcoming one, that philosophy needs to be projected into next year. What are the annual regular events, and if we're sending one or two people or whatever, council decides, do us up a budget based on that, so we know what we're doing, and then it's not necessarily about the who, it's, it's about the what. Because of course, the, the flip side of it is, is those that, those that have the time may go to more than those that don't. And, and the report shows that. So if, if we don't look at it in terms of, I'm surprised we put in a budget that small, knowing full well that we're going to go over it before we even start because of the cost of going to AMM twice a year with three or four people. You know, when you go to that and you find out other communities that, you know, you look at Thompson, they'll, they'll have three and four and five people going to these events, and...
Wait three years and see how many they're sending, right? Because if they're small, they're closes, they're going to be in the same spot.
Oh yeah.
So I mean, like, we need to be, even four years, we need to be more strategic about what we're doing. And we're not in liberty to be like other communities, we're in the spot we're in.
Well, that's right, that's fine, but all I'm saying is basically, the, the money has to be purposed and then the who gets sorted out and handed back. But if we know that we're doing it that way, then, and then there should be some, the council has expenses, why don't we see some sort of mini budget?
It's on the, on the statements that Jody provides. On the, it's in there.
I think part of this is last year, we'd said there was no new, new council seminars, but let's face it, this year, a lot of things come up that were not normal. I think that's why a lot of it was, was out of expense. But it's just this, the whole purpose of this was to be mindful that we need to include it this year. Job?
Yeah, no, I'm under the same, I guess, as Alan and Rodney both, like, these are important things that, that are going on, but we do need to be, I guess, mindful of, and a lot with what Brian is saying as well, like, these events, we know these events are coming up every year, you know, we can budget for them in a, in a strategic way. But there is also the unknown, like, there has been things that have come up and that's, we need to budget somewhat for that as well. So we just need to look at it coming up into our budget here, so, that's what it is.
Anybody else?
I agree with Alan, and thought I said that before, but it's, uh, you know, let's pick one or two where, like, the one going to AMM or, and that, and report back. I had already made my decision, I've gone to two of them, and then the FCM, and I learned a lot. And, and it was really good to be comfortable with, with speaking with people and that. But I will not be going to anymore, because I feel two is enough, two is enough for me. So, and then the...
Okay, so, just, yeah. If I, if I may say, um, we, heading into twenty sixteen, we knew that there was Federation of Canadian Municipalities Annual Meeting being held in Manitoula, and that's why we went. Uh, we knew that there were AMM meetings. I'd be curious to know what the CAO's travel budget is. I'm sure it's considerably higher than what ours is. I don't know where we thought we were going to go on five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. But you don't get to go great far, you shouldn't get to eat very much, and you're probably going to sleep in your backseat. And I think sticking our heads in the sand and waiting for things to get better and bring our heads out and see what's going on is not the right strategy. We made a lot of inroads last week in Winnipeg, a lot of inroads, that other communities just wished they would have been able to do. And that's not free, and we got to be able to plan, we can't plan for everything, we didn't know that Tocco was going to go in there. We didn't know that there was going to be an issue with army trucks, we, we didn't know. So those things cost money, I think that the amount of money that this council has spent to date in the course of the year is quite low.
You may be a little shocked, but it may appear that we travel a lot, but your management staff doesn't go that much either. We pick our poison and we go to ones, we don't go to our association meetings, because we don't get the bang for a buck. And Jen, you haven't gone in a while, I've switched, I am allowed so much in my budget, and half the time it's worth not being in it because we can't afford being away from here. I just wanted you to not think if you're blowing a bunch of money on, on management's...
I, I don't, I don't suggest that for a second, I think you invest in your people.
And you try to, and I guess what we're saying is, we pick, just like you guys, I'm sure do, we pick what was beneficial for us, and if it's not so beneficial, we don't go.
I think what Jim was trying to get at though is like, I mean, if you compared, say, the mayor's budget, budget line for travel and training to the CEO's budget for travel and training, there's probably more than five hundred dollars, so like...
That should be, unless you want a monkey sitting there.
Right, absolutely, but just that it should be a little bit more in part with us, like you said, right? You want to invest in your people, whether that's your management staff or...
All we were saying by bringing this forward was we didn't budget it anywhere last year, and we had to...
We need to be wiser, I agree.
I'm not here to debate who spent money wisely, I mean, that's not my business.
I just didn't, I just didn't want anybody to...
Because when I first read it, I was under the impression that I was over my budget by eighty-five hundred dollars, and I'm thinking, holy cow. And then I was so happy to see that you were the big spender, because it wasn't me, you know, so... I mean, that's, yeah, so, and you're right, outside of those two events, I can't think of, you know, I just can't, I can't think of where else we, you know, we've been going. So I, I think that, uh, you know, when we went to FCM, we didn't know what was coming down the pipe in late, late August, or mid-July. And so, and we do need to be, I don't think we're going to FCM again until it's in Saskatchewan, Winnipeg, you know, because it's just too expensive. It's just too expensive. So things like AMM are very important, uh, the iron is hot right now, and it's time to strike, you know? They know who we are. They know who we are, they know what our issues are, they know where we're sitting, and they, and, and this is a perfect platform to put that out there. So it's important to go, I know it's costly, but it's important to go.
It's not important for four people to go.
No, it's not, you're right, one person...
And not once have we seen a report back from any council going to these meetings, right?
Council gave, we brought one report back, and you didn't believe it, so let's move on.
That was unsolicited, yeah, but I'm saying, we need to have some, we can go down that road if you like, I mean...
There's no point in doing that.
Exactly, so don't bring it up, Jim.
Okay.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that we don't bring any reporting back, right? So if I'm traveling, I'm sure if Randy's traveling, she brings in information back to her staff, we don't do that as a council. So then why are we spending the money, right? I would not, we don't operate a business like that, so there should be...
Absolutely, I'm a hundred percent on the side. I agree with you, Alan.
Well, there you go.
I have to say, I have to say one, with, with the seminars that they have, they may not show up right away, but there was the seminars I, that I went to, that later on, all of a sudden, like the asset management, that for one, I went back and looked at my book and I took notes all through there. So a lot of it, the dots connected between the ears.
But you go a lot of these, whether it's...
No, I understand, but there is...
Right, but they've got a PowerPoint presentation, you tell them, "Hey, can you send us a copy?"
We always don't hold it after meetings.
Right, but I mean, for us, not for you guys, but for us.
You can have a look at it, yeah, yeah. Sounds like we need a policy with regard to council travel. But to clarify that, if you want reporting, because how are you going to tell people they're required to report? And administration doesn't have to tell them off the double head, they just show you, "Here's the policy, this is what you're going to do, and where you go." And then we have to give the time to listen. I just want to make sure everybody, for next year.
Yes.
Four point four, intake screen tender, T eleven eight, two oh one six.
So basically, there was only one tender received in the amount of twenty-eight thousand eight fifteen, so we would like a resolution to move forward. We work this beforehand.
What do you mean beforehand?
Because the resolution's going to take two more weeks.
Oh, you want authorization to go get it now? Anybody ever come up?
No.
We had seventy-five thousand budgeted under gas tax reserve, and the intake screen is going to cost twenty-eight eight fifteen.
Were they... They're throwing on the travel budget, we'll be fine.
I noticed that it was sent to two suppliers, where they expected it to be any lower, or this is where, um...
Second I do.
Chris and, and Alan, um, and Jody, is this where they kind of expected it to be?
Usually, they come back and tell me if it's something out of the ordinary.
Yeah.
I can double check.
No, no, that's fine, if, no, if that's...
This would have been like part of this whole seventy-five thousand dollars, this wouldn't have been the whole amount.
No, no.
When you came in at twenty-eight, there was more work was to be done, this was...
Okay, we're good to order tomorrow?
Yeah.
Was this a maintenance issue or was this an unexpected?
It's a gas tax issue.
I think it was something that we knew was going to...
That was budgeted, yeah, that was budgeted under gas tax.
Okay, four point five, taxes, send a bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay. We should probably lock the doors.
My kids are at the...
This bylaw's a mess, we've changed it a hundred times, I shouldn't say a hundred, that's a total exaggeration. Been changed several times.
Maybe nine.
And not necessarily in the best interest. I'm very clear in saying like this, we need to review this to make sure that it's most effective in trying to get people to, to build. I think in light of the recent announcements we've had, we need to look upward onward, and I really believe that we should reconsider going back to the initial bylaw we have, that's when we have the most, the biggest advantage of it.
I just want to say again, move money in the budget for a community planner that has like a very ambiguous job description. I know that, you know, like between, I'm not training WASCO, but you know what I mean, helping WASCO with the airport thing. Now we have no fire chiefs, so you're going to be stepping into that role, like, you know what I mean? Like, we have money sitting in the budget for some of these things that are really, really, really important, and I think we need to start utilizing some of that budget money.
I would love to do that, probably come January, February, things lighten down, because I'll be the one pretty much having to train them and tell them what we've got on board. Because unfortunately, no one has this knowledge. But I think it's a great idea, I do think we need to move forward with that, because I'll be very clear later on the meeting. Yeah, much we appreciate it, but I do think this is something we really need to look at. It's not, it's been changed so many times, it's not necessarily that beneficial for anybody to come to our community now because of the way it's been changed so many times.
To me, two things have stayed the same since day one. You don't let the fox in the hen house, and people who know how to put heads in beds somehow need to be a part of it, which is the fox in the hen house. So we have to come to terms with how this is going to work, and we've got to make it work. We've got to be, find a way to make sure that those hotels are as busy as they can possibly be. Those are the, that's the generator, that's the generator of money. And that, I don't know how, I thought we were close, I thought we were oh so close.
Wait, I think the fox is...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
...sent to bylaw. It was on accommodation.
It's on the accommodation one?
No, built...
Well, I need to have both the accommodation...
Pause that, that conversation.
This is the tax incentive when someone's building...
This is called construction.
Why is he still down there?
Because they can utilize the bylaw.
So can he utilize, so can he utilize the bylaw, so can I.
I think specifically because he's brought it up in the past to review it. Yeah.
We're smoking directly.
Yeah, I'll check up.
Well, we can have another bylaw, I got these to say. Was, was twenty-four oh six the one you want to go back to, the two, two...
Very first one, actually. That was the one that was utilized the most, and that was the one that encouraged most development.
It was the easiest to, it was the easiest to explain and understand. This one now is so convoluted and confusing.
Is there any cross difference between the two then?
Not even close.
I'm just asking you guys if you're, if you want, if we can open this up, because it needs to change.
Jody's got lots of ideas too.
I'm going to get focused here. Go, go, go. I'm sorry.
I'm like, what the heck are you talking about?
Yeah, sorry, I, yeah.
It's not a good way to...
So, so, no.
And with the, when you let, when you let the fox in the hen house, and then when the, then when it...
And you lost the chickens.
What?
Yeah, you lost the chickens, so...
So, so, we had it at, at a ten-year, at a ten-year term, and then we shortened it to five. And in retrospect, we should, we should be looking to go back to that, is that what I heard?
And we initially did it.
Should be more for shorter time.
For shorter time.
Bigger bang for your buck at the beginning.
So a three-year term or something along those...
Well, in my, in my mind, I think the five-year is probably the best bang for your buck. And you go zero, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred.
We made it too difficult, I would like to bring back the first one for you.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying...
Well, that's pretty simple.
Five, five years.
Zero, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty.
And then it just jumps up.
And we didn't reinvent the wheel on our first bylaw, that was taken right out of City of Doffin. Which was very effective, and that actually helped, the more we started touching it, is when it just went down. The more we started touching it, is when it just went downhill.
Yeah.
I would like to bring that back to you guys for the recommendation at our next meeting for review. Like you said, Jody's got some ideas.
She's, she's actually got a spreadsheet.
Yeah, and go back to the first rather than this one. This one is not necessarily the best bang for the buck for people to encourage and to develop in our town.
We are, we are soon to, pretty soon we'll be hitting the road to go find these.
That's what I mean.
Services for our community and we need to have our best sales go up.
I'd like to see this in January, February.
For sure.
We need to get moving on this.
We, we've just, we're having a reduction in the, the amount of property taxes that are coming in. There's two ways of going about getting that, those dollars back. It's either by reduction of expenses, which in turn could lead to reductions of, of services and that sort of thing, and the other way to is increase revenues and it's the, the not as quick way, but it's the more long-lasting way is to increase revenues, so that's where we need to be looking.
Okay, so let's do this. We're ready to do.
Okay. We're open to reviewing this?
Yes.
All right. We'll get back in.
Okay.
Let go. Thank you.
I was waiting for him to bring the heads on the beds in with like, you know, if we have people and it's booming and then people will wanna develop and invest here, then I'm waiting.
I was waiting on the edge of IC, I'm like, this is gonna be good.
Yeah, yeah.
He thought this through big time.
Oh, dear, dear, dear.
He almost stole your thunder.
I was like, hang on, I know, I'm saying what you did.
4.6.
So we've got, our meeting dates are coming up for Monday, December 12th and then the 26th. Can we just go, we usually do this is we have one meeting in December.
December.
So the 12th.
Is January busy?
In saying that, Christmas Eve, we usually pass a resolution, Christmas though was on a.
Christmas isn't until Sunday.
Yeah, Sunday, so we're not doing that this year.
We wouldn't do it on the Friday before Christmas?
It was always done because the Friday was the 24th.
Yeah.
Or the Thursday, whatever, whatever day the 24th was.
Christmas isn't until Sunday, so.
So the 24th is Saturday.
Let's do it anyway.
Do it on the 23rd.
Merry Christmas. You guys are offering on Friday the 23rd.
Well, no, I think that, I don't know, that's.
I think why not, people are used to.
You should probably cost that up.
That'll save us a couple of bucks, won't it?
No.
No, no. No, no, it's no fair.
Right, right.
Missed the spirit of the holiday season there.
It'll, it'll save us money because we can turn the lights off in this building and use the hydro, turn the heat down a little bit, save some propane, look at me saving us money.
You go, keep going.
It is, it is.
That's your year as well.
It's a very responsible thing for us to do.
So resolution closing for the 23rd then?
Yeah.
From noon on.
Noon on.
Yeah. Wait, don't you guys usually close a little bit early on New Year's Eve too?
Never.
Nope, okay, nevermind then. I won't start a back catalog.
We could.
We'll keep it up.
Talk about the day after, though, you're reevalving, that's an important one for me.
Sorry, wait, what were we doing for December meeting dates?
Just December 12th. One meeting on 12th.
Okay, I won't be meeting in December.
Okay, 4.7, plastic bag bylaw.
Okay, so as everybody knows, we have a bylaw that is supposed to ban plastic bags, so there was some confusion with the bylaw originally and the wording, so we fixed all of that and then we discussed that, you know, some business owners had purchased a large stock and buy overgradable bags, so we would give them a grace period because the misunderstanding was kind of our fault, but we never really set a hard date for this grace period. Personally, I get a lot of comments, complaints, frustrated people coming at me wondering, when are you going to start enforcing your bylaw? I don't think that that's unreasonable for them to expect that I would have an answer for that, but I really don't. So my recommendation is that we have our public safety officer send out letters saying that, you know, after December 1st, if you're caught using plastic bags, you will be fined and that after that, he starts handing out fines. I think you enforce a card at first and if you're having fines a couple of times, they're not gonna risk using plastic bags. Or if we're not willing to start enforcing this bylaw, then we reevaluate whether it's really necessary and get rid of it because we have a few bylaws that, you know, the curfew bylaw, the perfect example, we can't enforce that bylaw yet we still have it on our books and I don't think we should be wasting our time or wasting staff's time with by, or bylaws that we're not willing to enforce. So I think we need to get our ducks in a row and set a hard date, get it out there, make it consistent for everybody and just deal with it. And that's my, that's my two cents.
Fox?
Yeah, I agree.
Are there a lot of places that are, we're having a problem with?
Houndsoya.
Yeah, this is 06.
For example, a business posted today that instead of using bags with handles, they're just gonna give out garbage bags as, as an alternative. So I mean, we're gonna have things like that, so I mean, that's a single-use plastic bag in my mind and it should be banned and.
You're feeding the bird some supply.
Exactly, so, but I mean, like, because we're not consistent and we're enforcing it, it seems at some places and not at other places, how do you, you know what I mean? Like, how do you ask our bylaw enforcement officer to go out and start handing out fines to some places and not others, when other, you know what I mean? Like, I think we just need to be consistent.
Said there was six, right? Said we know that a handful and then there was six, we know six places, so we go to those six places.
For sure, I think like.
And then after that, if there's, if there's, then everyone's gonna say, well, those guys are still doing it, and he goes to that.
Exactly, well, and I think like that's where his efforts should be, definitely is we know that there's a handful of places that are still doing it, so yes, he should definitely go there and say, just so you know, but I think so that those six places can then say, well, why are you picking on us and whatever, that everybody should just get the same letter and obviously, yes, your emphasis is gonna be the places that you know that are still using.
I'm not stopping for speeding every time I speed.
I get it, but I just think consistency, right? Everybody got the letter and then you don't have this guy saying, because I've had it, well, I got a letter, but this guy didn't get a letter and that guy uses plastic bags, so, and it's like, Jesus, you guys, like, I'm not a preschool teacher, look at, do with your own stuff, but yeah. For me, for me, like, December orders, you know, you can roll it out, it doesn't take long to order other bags in or whatever, you're gonna do wrap it in brown paper, I'm sure you can get a discount on some Polgo bags right now.
Did we actually pass a resolution in contravention of Urbana to extend it?
No.
No, what we had was a discussion.
We had a discussion and it was saying, I'm, I'm surprised that it hasn't already corrected itself.
But that's why we, they're not clear direction, so we need to give clear direction so that it's consistent.
No, I think, I think those that, like, the clear direction you need to give to the person doing the work is bylaws are meant to be enforced, know them and enforce them. It's not about, well, I heard something said at a council meeting, because it wasn't clear direction from council, it was just a discussion. And, and it was, it was reasonable, I say, I took a blind eye for a while.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, is that we didn't give that direction of what is our grace period. We, as a council, said it's reasonable for us to give a grace period because we weren't clear with our bylaw, so we will give you a grace period to use up some of your biodegradable bags, but we didn't say we will give you three months or 90 days or 120 days or whatever, we simply said, we'll give you a grace period to use up some of your bags. So our bylaw enforcement or our public safety officer is going to these businesses saying, okay, guys, you need to stop now and the people are saying, oh, come on, like, we just have a little bit of stock left, we're just using up our stock and that's what they've been saying all year. So what I'm saying is we've given them sufficient time to use up their stock and get their stuff together and figure out an alternative and we need to.
And December 1st is.
And December 1st, we need to say to them, okay, I understand you wanna use your stock, but if you keep using your stock up after December 1st, you're gonna get a fine and then go and find them if they're doing it and then like Alan said, right, then if somebody's saying this person's still using it, then he goes there and they get fined again and eventually, they're gonna get sick of paying fines and just comply with the bylaw.
Oh.
Or on the flip side, if it's not worth it, then repeal the bylaw and just don't have it, because it would save a lot of headache and hassle and frustration, I can tell you.
Well, I thought the bylaw, sorry.
No. Chad, you wanna?
Uh, no, I'm, yeah, let's get rid of the prospect here.
Okay.
No, I thought it was pretty clear. They had a certain date, did the bylaw, bang, sorry, stop using my biodegradable, all the bags, I have a shop full of them.
Okay, so December 1st, no more flicker. Okay, December 1st.
Yeah, yeah, can start all the people up.
Yes, you can. Okay, uh, payrolls and accounts.
Um, we require a resolution for pay period 22 and 23 in the amount of $223,496. Town checks in the amount of $1,141,8549. KRC of 332-559-21 and EFT, electronic fund transfer of $218,991. I just wanna point out there was a few that were higher checks that were done. Fort Gary, that was for the dump truck body. We had purchased more chemical and stuff, that's always a big billing. KSD, $29,376,06 in school levies. Minister of Finance was $718,000, that was our adventure payments. Minister of Finance again was $40,000 and I can't remember what I wrote. Oh my goodness. Welfare, that's what it was. We paid welfare fees. And recycling center was in advance of $32,262 and we also purchased almost $14,000 in the salt for this year for KSD.
Okay.
Sorry, I just.
Yes, councillor give.
I was just gonna say, did we, we wrote a check to ourselves for $11,970.
Is that the KRC?
No.
From town of the 52, town of the 52.
Property taxes.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was wondering.
What check number?
It's 33 and.
Um, 1800.
Ooh, James, semi-coke.
Yes, I don't know.
I hope, is it?
Sorry.
Alison, give in the meantime?
Sorry. Yeah, it's for property taxes.
Okay.
It would have, that big one would have been property at the airport.
Okay.
So I'd sent Randy an email today on two checks. One was a KRC check for 425933.
Yeah.
He said that was part for heating the pool and part for security.
Correct.
Could we get a breakdown of what?
$4,000, I think, was for the, there was like 200, any time the amount?
4259.
259 was for the security.
Okay.
And $4,000 was the monthly fee for hydro at the pool.
Could we ask KSD for 24 months of monthly hydro bills? $4,000 a month? Yes. Forty-eight thousand dollars a year to heat the pool, that seems high.
It costs lots to heat that pool.
I'm sure it does, but.
Tons. Jody was commenting on it the other day. She was talking with BJ about it. It's crazy.
So, so we can cross, because it's $4,000, that's a flat fee, right? They're charging us a flat.
Which I knew we were charged a flat fee.
Right.
We talked one time about putting a meter on it to make it a little more efficient, but.
Something, but maybe it's worth giving everything that's going on, to revisit that.
Okay. So asking for your hydro bill.
24 months, it should be easy, you can call hydro and they'll give you like in a spreadsheet works and it's like, you know, 24 lines.
Okay.
Anything else?
Not, sorry, and not their statement entries, like the actual bills, you know what I mean?
Yeah, with the actual bill that I get.
Yeah, or the spreadsheet, not like, here's what we put in our statements. That guy, see?
Oh, you guys.
Okay, moving to the camera.
Um, be it resolved that we now need to be in camera portion of the community, the whole meeting, and mayor's got to make sure we're just requiring our attention.